So I think if we have time following the conclusion of this, because I know as of running I heard you say you had a two o'clock hard stop.
I do, I have a hard stop at two, so if like we're in the middle of a conversation or something, I'm gonna need to step out and take a call, but feel free to, you know, don't stop if it's, if there's still some more questions or whatever.
And then following that, I think we may at that point have some information that we can pull up on the plate so we can work to do that.
Okay.
So I will not belabor first pass, but just wanted to kind of remind you about is she still on there?
She's on.
Yeah, I'm here. So just wanted to give you the total budget dollars where we were when we concluded our first pass, and for revenues, we are at three hundred and eighteen million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand and seventy-five dollars. And then for the expenditure budget, we were at three hundred and forty million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Mentioned earlier that since our first pass scenario, we've worked to make some changes to reduce the variance between revenues and expenditures. I just wanted to highlight those, so these are some of the things that we've identified both on the revenue and the expenditure side to be able to make changes or had a need for changes. So based on the information provided from Keith Miller, the tax assessor, we have adjusted the ad valorem revenue based on the agree upon valuation between HCA and Buncombe County Tax Office. That resulted in an additional six hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Health and Human Services yields an additional intergovernmental revenue as a result of an adjustment to the indirect cost plan and resultant reimbursement revenue. So we went back and reevaluated the dollar amount involving the indirect cost plan allocation, how that then is received as reimbursement through state and federal sources, and made a change, so that is an additional dollar amount of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. We further reviewed the early retirement population, so as you know, we have another group of individuals who've been identified to retire.
I may need to send that one.
So remaining is probably around twenty, forty-five to thirty remaining going into fiscal year 2020. So we definitely had some of those folks retire towards the end of this fiscal year, maybe some still coming for the end of the fiscal year. But we reevaluated that number going into fiscal year 2020 and identified a reduction of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and nine dollars out of salary and FICA anticipated health insurance costs for individuals, kind of making some estimates around when they may depart from the organization next fiscal year. We additionally identified some other operating and turnover support dollars where we could reduce by seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. For the fiscal year 2020 budget, we are proposing to reduce the economic development incentive budget in association with Lenamar and a small portion for Jacob Holm by one point five million. Jacob Holmes is due to the natural, what does the agreement look like? But for Lenamar, which is the larger portion of the one point five million, this reduction would be dependent upon your approval to reserve fiscal year 2019 budgeted dollars in a special projects fund.
Turn it over.
Yes. So the commitment through 2024 is six million dollars in the event that Lenamar is able to meet the outlined milestones. There's a total of three million dollars in the current fiscal year budget because we had one point five million in eighteen, they didn't meet the milestone. We rolled those forward into fiscal year nineteen, and together with the fiscal year nineteen, one point five, and the carry forward, that's three million dollars in fiscal year nineteen's budget. So we would be requesting the ability to take the three million dollars, set it aside in a special projects fund earmarked specific to the Lenamar commitment if they meet their milestones, which then enables us in fiscal year twenty to not have budgeted dollars for Lenamar specifically. The plan would be that we would expend those funds before coming back to request funds from the general fund for the remaining six, the remaining three million of the six. That's a lot.
Well, isn't, is that consistently what was just approved at the recent meeting?
It is.
Okay, so that's already, we've approved.
And we should have done it then, but we'll move this forward into contract, set aside for Lenamar. We did the contract, but we didn't do the budget amendment at that night.
So, so what I'll say is that the three million that's budgeted currently, we're requesting to set it aside, that's taken into account in the projections, so essentially you have to count it, count it as being spent in the current fiscal year, let's set it aside, and then we're able to reduce our request going for fiscal year twenty by one point five million dollars.
Yeah.
All right. So we would like to add back one hundred thousand dollars to contingency. You'll remember in first pass, we had taken those dollars, zeroed them out in conversation with Admiral, we'd like to request that we put one hundred thousand dollars back in for contingency. And then the other item you see in here is the addition of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the county manager and the organizations to work towards addressing pay and compensation needs and inequities within departments across the organization and in comparison to market. We discussed earlier in the budget conversation that the budget planning process has highlighted departmental personnel needs as well as the need for overarching organizational pay and compensation philosophy. The county managers requested the formation of a work group to conduct work and propose a pay and compensation philosophy. Following a recommendation from the group, the plan would be to begin identifying an approach and prioritize salary adjustments or other personnel-related needs. Just wanted to give you, so this group that has formed has created a stated purpose and objective, I'm gonna read that to you. The Buncombe County Compensation Philosophy Work Group is a cross-functional team with representation from twenty-one different county departments, working together to develop a comprehensive philosophy statement supplemented by related policies. The intent of their output is to establish criteria for how Buncombe County can attract and retain a diverse and qualified workforce that meets the needs of its customers as well as provide consistent pay strategies that meet departmental goals. So just wanted, I know Admiral referenced that earlier, I just wanted to give you information from, and I do believe that they have been a passionate work group and have been working very diligently to address and to provide a recommendation.
So this ask would be to, once that group has finished its work, how can we look across the county for those inequities that exist? How can we start addressing some of those issues in the next year? The staff is really working on that, they're trying to really make sure, Commissioner Beltrane's point, how do we make that even across? We can't make everything equal in the first year, but we do know there are issues that exist, we do know there are employees out there, especially on the lower end of the scale, that we haven't looked after over the years. So this is a small ask for us to start looking at that across the organization.
So those are the changes from first pass to second pass. This brings the second pass revenue budget to three hundred and nineteen million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. And then the expenditure budget is three hundred and thirty-nine million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. I'm gonna give you a comparison. So revenues increased by one million, four hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, and expenditures decreased by one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. So the total change in the variance between revenues and expenditures is a decrease of two million, eight hundred and four thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. So the prior variance in first pass to the current second pass variance means that we've lowered the potential appropriation by two point eight million. A reminder, second pass still includes the recommended positions that were included in the first pass. You all received a handout related to this and give you an opportunity to ask any questions, but these are positions that currently remain recommended in second pass.
If you go back to that slide real quick.
Yes.
Commissioner Beltrane had asked last time, what the dollars associated with those positions, we wanted to make sure that we give you the dollar impact.
Okay, try and get that.
You're asking for six patrol officers for the sheriff for detention. We're basically asking for twenty-one, and we're looking at doing ten of the twenty-one. The care coordinator in Health and Human Services, so at least for that at our last meeting, those are the folks that because of the rule change, instead of having a contract now, we need to do it in-house, that is all money coming from the state to do that, so there are nine physicians are recommended there. We do need one, HCA heat and air conditioner specialist in the general services group, and there's no impact, we asked them to go back and look at their operations to see how they can tweak that. And there's one ask from Assistant County Manager, that we spoke about before, and that includes your benefit system. So that's your list of the positions that we're asking for, that we can change the structure and not have everybody report to me or Jim, but have it spread out across the organization. We have two managers who oversee the portfolio of organizations. Any questions on that?
How do we come up with one sixty-two for a position?
That is, the one sixty-two came from HR in looking at the Evergreen Study and where the minimum and the midpoints are of that position, so that's where that number came from. I'm not, that's what we advertised, but that doesn't mean that that's where it ended up, that was the higher end, we might end up in the lower work, but that would be actually how the position, based on years of experience, that's kind of where we want to budget a hire rather than, well, we'll budget for that position.
So wanted to be able to demonstrate for you, so where do we begin with fiscal year 2019's amended budget in terms of our revenue dollars? What are all of the, what are all of the items, increases or decreases, that then get us to the fiscal year 2020 second pass revenue budget? These are those items. You can see in total, it's an increase of eight point nine million for ad valorem taxes. This is based on natural growth in addition to the revenue as a result of the property valuation for HCA. Sales tax is about a one point eight million dollar growth based on current trends, estimated at six percent growth. Intergovernmental includes the federal and state revenue dollars that were the offsetting portion from the care management positions, and that was about eight hundred and fifty thousand of that, and then just additional revenues anticipated across HHS. We talked a little bit about their shift in the allocations and the reimbursement to uncapped revenue sources, so in total, that's about one point five million dollars. Slight increase for excise tax in the projection for next fiscal year, same as permanents and fees, about three hundred and seven thousand more than fiscal year 2019. And then the other category, so sale of assets, investment earnings, and miscellaneous, a net increase of sixteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. You know, I think that might be one trend that we need to reevaluate based on what we were seeing towards the end of March through current. Again, that would be really dependent upon cash in the bank that you're then earning interest on, so I might would be a little reluctant to push that revenue too much. And then interfund transfer, so if we were looking at adopted, we could parse out what were transfers that take place, so activity that takes place during the fiscal year. So the interfund transfer revenues gets, it gets a little elevated as amendments are made, so what I'm just gonna parse out for you here is that the fiscal year twenty budget reduces the Article forty-six fund transfer, so the six point five million that we've transferred from the AB Tech Fund to the general fund for operating is now reduced by one point five million, so that's five million in total. The other part I spoke about earlier was that we had a planned transfer in nineteen for a one point five million dollar transfer from the insurance fund. Going into the 2020 budget, we've eliminated that transfer, so then we've reduced that by three million, and then the remainder of that decrease is related to 2019's activity, so that we're looking at apples to apples. And then for all intents and purposes, appropriated fund balance or your variance from amended nineteen to 2020 would mean that we would need an additional seven point two million in revenue as appropriated fund balance. So we started at twelve, a variance that we'll look at, needs about seven more million in revenue to make up the full budget.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, are you saying that if we just adopted the second pass, the forecasted use of fund balance in the budget would be seven point two million?
Twelve plus seven.
Twelve plus seven.
And that'll become more clear as we go through this. So this one's, this one's busy, but I definitely wanted to be able to capture holistically all of the areas where you see increases or decreases from amended to the 2020 second pass in expenditures. So we started with three hundred and twenty-three million, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. I'm gonna quickly go through these, ask me questions as we go. So the net, so the increase for education is a placeholder at four point two four percent growth, which in total, across Buncombe County, Asheville City, and AB Tech, is three point five million dollars over the 2019 amended budget. You're able to see the early education increase of almost two point seven, which establishes the total budget to three point six million. There's early retirement incentive costs, which I talked about earlier, in total about two point four million dollars. The affordable housing increase is two point three million. Departmental capital outlay operating and program is roughly a two million dollar increase over the amended. Part of that is the IT of four hundred and seventy-nine, four, that Matt spoke to. The increase cost for base healthcare claims, so this doesn't include those healthcare costs for the new positions or the early retirement, because I've categorized them in the other areas. So that net, that net increase is just about two million. New position expenses is one point nine six million. If you remember though, that nine hundred and fifty-one thousand are the new costs, and then we have offsetting revenues or reductions in operating for the other side of that expenditure. State retirement employer contribution on base salaries is one point two million. Pago for capital, so in fiscal year 2019, there was no Pago budget established in 2019. So this reinstates a Pago budget in the fiscal year twenty for a million dollars, and again, Matt spoke to the dollars that we were gonna need to do the Pago capital. Debt service, so debt service, the nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars is an increase related to the projection for fiscal year 2019 projects. So we approved projects for 2019, we will issue debt this year, and we will begin payments in this year 2020. So that's the debt service related to those projects. The, so net change to base salary in fringe is eight hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Dollars to address future salary needs that we spoke of is six hundred and fifty thousand. We previously had accounted for the benefits in risk department, so individuals who administer our health insurance, insurance fund, in addition to employee health. We're previously in the health insurance fund. In discussions with Don, we viewed that they should really actually be directly part of the general fund, because what you end up doing is doing an allocation of the FTE share back to the insurance fund, so it's clear to directly include them in the general fund. So that's a net increase to the general fund, but it's not new dollars. We've included the transfer to the reappraisal fund, again, that's the last transfer, so one-third of the transfer that remains to go towards the estimates for what it would, what it will cost us to conduct the reappraisal. Here, it's a net decrease of one point three million for contingency, again, asking that a hundred thousand dollars remain for fiscal year 2020. This again is, so the budgetary transfers, we take out the activity that's only relevant for 2019, and then the reduction of economic development incentive, three point two, three point two-two-eight, yes, because it's in comparison to amended, so yes, that's accurate, three point two-two-eight. Those are all of the big categories of changes that gets us to fiscal year 2020's expenditure budget.
This is changes basically from prior budget to now.
So that's correct.
So we're seventeen.
So Don previously reviewed the fiscal year 2018 projected available fund balance, and continuing with the projection of fiscal year 2019 available fund balance, we project sixty-one million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. So that's a change in the categories that we talked about earlier.
The restricted portion basically changes. So there's state stabilization in there, there's, excuse me, non-spendable, and dang it, that's wrong. So those, those items change the amount of unallocated or available fund balance, so that's why there's a change there.
So we begin with sixty-one million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, which represents that we have nineteen point four zero percent of available fund balance. Your minimum by policy is fifteen percent, and so that dollar amount that you minimally need to hold is forty-seven million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-six. So we have available, we expect to have available over the fifteen percent, thirteen million point eight. So what does that look like when we apply the fiscal year twenty variance? So again, there's your minimum, we start with thirteen point eight available over our fifteen percent. The variance for second pass is nineteen point nine million. We appropriate all of that, we end up six million lower, and we have a projected fund balance after the second pass of thirteen point zero nine percent. The next scenario is dependent upon the actual sale of Ferry Road. So starting with the sixty-one point two available, if we were to add in the five point two five million anticipated from the sale of Ferry Road, we get a new available fund balance of sixty-six point four seven one. So that says we then have twenty-one point zero six percent available, the threshold still doesn't change, so then the available amount over fifteen is nineteen point one million. So then what does that look like in terms of our variance? So our available is nineteen point one two four, one eight eight. Second pass variance is nineteen million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. If we appropriate all of it, we go just under our fifteen percent minimum by seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, putting us at fourteen point seven six percent, so just under our fifteen percent. Any questions around the fund balance or?
All this does right now, we're talking about balancing, bringing it to fifteen percent. What I'm seeing, even in both scenarios, that's, we've gotta have an increase to get back to the fifteen.
Because you could have, throughout the year, we get control of spending and then ultimately give something back to fund balance. There's a lot of different variables involved, I wouldn't say Raisin Shacks is necessarily the go-to.
Great answer.
So that concludes the, well, actually, I'm gonna give you concluding thoughts. So just going back through quickly what the second pass scenario includes. It includes strategic initiative requests at identified funding levels. The strategic partnerships grant funding is still included. If you recall, though, that the nineteen amount started about, I don't know, one point five, but there was a conversation from Rachel Nygaard that some of the affordable housing dollars, we would move to be managed by planning, so that was a hundred and eighty thousand and a hundred and fifty, just over a hundred and fifty thousand, leaving you with about one point two million for strategic partnership grant funding. And so that includes, look at Rachel, that also includes tipping point, right, Rachel?
Do you have your number?
That's included.
Yes, yeah, it's one point two. So second pass includes the twenty-one recommended new positions. There are budgeted dollars for strategic planning process, that was a request from the county manager, so there is seventy-five thousand dollars currently in the county manager budget for us to be able to move through a strategic planning process, beginning with you all. The budgeted dollars should begin addressing salary inequities across the organization, operating dollars to sustain current levels of service, reinstatement of budgeted dollars for Pago capital, and also includes the cost of living increase for employees that was What second pass scenario does not include is fully funded requests from departments for personnel and salary needs and operating requests. And it additionally has not identified a sustainable revenue source to balance the So that is the conclusion of the information.
For our presentation, so for the next thirty minutes, we'll have conversations with you, from what you've seen and heard so far in the budget, is there anything that we're not including before we try to dig in? We need your feedback to see how you feel about the policy around appropriating the tariff fund balance to balance it? Are there things that you want out of the budget, are there things you want to include? I want to get your thoughts before we start the exam. The next time you come to, it will be with a recommended budget, so this is for you to give us guidance and direction on where we go from here.
So you've got built-in numbers for the education ask based on revenue increases, so, and we don't know what they're going, do we know what they're going for?
I did send them the budget meeting.
They did send us their draft, they sent out today.
And I'm sending, I'm sending that out to you all today, so we do have those formal information from all three.
Are they asking for less than?
You know better.
I don't know what the answer to that, but, well, that's not fair.
But do we call the four point two four, it's a formula that we all agree upon for the school system and AB Tech, well, schools agreed to, and we also passed it on to AB Tech, that they would, we would show them how they can be predictable in what we expect to have available, so they got that information on March fifteenth, all right, about what that number looked like from us.
It's so much better.
So they had that, but that doesn't mean that they will conform to asking just for that amount, so you guys get to make the decision to follow that policy or to give them more, we can have that conversation. They will be here on the seventh, in the meeting session, so on March seventh at twelve, the schools will be here, and we have an agenda that you will hear first from Asheville City Schools, then Buncombe, and then AB Tech, and you can go through that at that point and decide if you want to place all that we have in place, or you need to find additional money, we can, we can have that conversation after the seventh.
Why don't we do that upstairs where the people in the evenings can see it? That way they can come before all of us in the chamber. It's what we've done in the past.
That's your choice, and the whole, so we have other items on the agenda, do you want us to move some of those? Do you want us to move some of those and make it that or?
Well, they, they've always came for us in the chamber. And that way the people at home can see it. That, you know, and then at 5 o'clock, just people are getting home to be able to see what's going on. So I don't think that needs to be brought in here.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Crowell on that. Because we, it's always been a win-win.
You know, the one thing I would, I mean, I generally would like to do that too. But we also don't want to be here at 11 o'clock at night and exhausted and making bad decisions, right? So.
We get paid for something, so if we're here at 10 o'clock, it's okay too.
No, but I, I don't want to get at the end and be like, so we need, we need a, we need a trade-off on that if we have, if we have to do it.
They got to start in my time.
The, you know, I, I, I mean, as you guys know, and I've shared this with, you know, commissioners. I mean, I'm very interested in taking a little bit deeper dive on some of these budget issues with the schools than we have. You know, I think mostly in the past, what, what happens in the budget process is they come in and sort of assume that they're going to get at least as much as they got last year. And then whatever additional amount of money they want, they basically explain, here's what we're going to, here's what the additional needs are, and we spend our time talking about, you know, how much, you know, we can, we can support that expansion budget. I am interested in, you know, looking at some of the achievement gap issues in the school systems as part of this budget process. You know, some of the numbers are just, they're just terrible.
But the achievement gap only in one section of the school is undercounted.
No, it's not. No, it is not. And, and so that's part of the reason, you know, I, we've had some meetings with this school board, with some members of commission and staff, and I've said, you know, I think the whole commission's going to want to see this information because they, they've got great data. It's not, all the data is not what you want to see, but they've got great information. So I would really love for them to be able to share that with the full commission. Maybe not in as much detail as in some of the kind of, you know, meetings they've had in the past, but I think it would be great. In the county's budget work session last week, they also presented a bunch of great data. So I would, I would like to give them a little bit more space in terms of the convert, the time for the conversation than we have in, in the past years. So for those reasons, I'd love to do it in the evening, but depending on how much other business we have to do, we need to think about what's realistic to get done on that day. And maybe, maybe we do, and, you know, we can always, you know, not everything needs to happen in one meeting. I mean, this is, we're not going to solve all this stuff in one meeting, so.
They were prepared to come and do a full deep dive into their data.
Well, just call, what I'm calling this is that's the most transparent area that we can do this time. That's upstairs. You know, we're looking at transparency, and we keep talking about transparency. Transparency is us in that chamber. Everybody can all, everybody can watch, and I can watch it on TV. Some people don't have computers, but they can see it on TV.
Now, are we, are we broadcasting through this? We are broadcasting this.
It's not live.
We tape it and it's, yeah, but it's so big. People watch the government channel.
Right.
But one, you know, one possible kind of, maybe kind of in-between is we could, we could do something in the afternoon, you know, more like 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock. So we have a little bit of time to get some presentations done before the regular 5:00 o'clock meeting. But we could do it upstairs. I mean, so we could maybe kind of start a little earlier than usual, so we're not there at 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, and then we'll.
But, but still keep, but do that upstairs and broadcast it.
That's the way I'd do it.
What do y'all think, what do you think about that, Arbol?
We're open. We'll, we'll pivot to whatever.
I like that.
So 12:00.
I like that.
So instead of 12 to 2, that, same day. We'll get with the schools and let them know when it's just a couple hours later. They were going to be here from 12, and the entire, just about then. So this way they can come from 2 until 5 early.
Didn't we have the early childhood deal scheduled?
Not from May 7?
Oh, it's not.
I think it is. I don't think it's on a three meeting.
From 2:00 to 2:30 or 4:00, I think.
Yeah, it was May 7.
It is May 7?
It is May 7, yeah.
I thought you meant as an agenda item for this.
Is that from 2, 2:30 or 4?
2:30 to 4, which is, um, kind of shows the White Sox.
Can't we switch that to 12?
Be flexible.
That's a good point.
If you did it at 12 till 2 or 1:30, and then at 12:00, you'd be long there, but at 1, at 2:00, then you can have the schools.
I really would like to have the opportunity to have more time with the schools. That three-hour timeframe, so we can really dig in to our questions.
I'm trying that way.
12:00?
Because at least we're in a process where we're not stopping, and we've got two or three hours to go on it and whatever. That makes our date, it might be long, but it won't be midnight.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I can make it with two hours sleep.
So we'll make that change and send that out. To 2 till 4 on Tuesday the 7th, 2 to 5. Whenever, take a break, and then we'll start the commission meeting.
All right, what else, other, other things, other feedback, other thoughts on the budget?
Going back for any, you attended on the education deal. I mean, myself and Al, when George Wood was here, really, I thought we had a good meeting that we was going to stay within whatever the growth was, and we had projected 4.2. I thought they was very happy with, they said they would make it work. My concern is now, we're what, 4.5?
4.24.
4.24, so we're right where.
We said it would be.
We said. But we, I mean, nobody's got a crystal ball, but what's going to happen in a couple of years? This economy is not going to continue to go the way it is right now. And we dropped down, and they've agreed. I mean, I was hoping they would come in and say, hey, we'd like to put, you know, 3/4% back in reserve for the future when we need it. And now I say, they're wanting more. Is that what you're?
You know, I did hear the initial budget presentation. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have the number of like what the 4.2 would be there, so I'm not sure if it was, I, I don't know. I didn't, I wasn't sure if it was at or above the 4.2% amount.
Their job is to ask you for what they true, and then you can, are they keep to that plan of 4.24? Or you can decide to go up or down. So we will send you what they sent us, the PowerPoint that they sent us. We will send that to you right after this meeting. And then they will come and decide what they want to ask you to do. But they did agree to 2.4, you're right. And that's what we built our budget around. The preliminary budget right now has a placeholder for 2.4 now. 4.24. 4.24.
But my.
In the future, in the future, if it is 2%, we would show that number to them and our dog would try to hold them tight.
And that's why we're going to do it upstairs where everyone can see it, because you know what's going to happen. They're going to get it, and they have not broadcasted that. Hey, they have agreed to give us the growth. But whenever the growth slows down, they're going to say, commissioner's cut us again. You know, I want it to be made really in public that this is what we agreed to. We want to stand behind it. I, I wish they somehow look at a reserve.
You know, I think that, you know, the, unfortunately for us, the spin is always going to be there. You know, you know, people can spin it out if they want to. But I, I like giving them a number. I really like giving them a number and forcing them to come back to us, because what's happening is they're coming back to us and then asking us for additional after we've given them a guideline. You know, so it's different than them coming in and asking for 5 and us giving them, giving them 4. It's different now than it was, it's different than it was before, I think.
If it ended meeting, it was, we give them a number and ask them, can you live with the growth? And they, they said, yes. We know what we're getting, so.
But that's what we're doing, right? That's what we're, that's what we've, we've told them that it's 4.2, right?
Yes.
I, I mean, the way I, the way I think about it is that, you know, that that's sort of a general rule of thumb. I mean, we don't have an adopted policy saying, in the future, it's that number, no discussion, it's just automatic. But it's, it's, you know, it's, it's what our revenue growth is, and so realistically, you should, you should be around that amount most years. But it's not up, but it's not up. We don't have an adopted hard and fast policy. It's just been sort of conversations we've had, right?
But, but their policy, they would have to, whoever it is, you know, we're just talking about the schools. If our growth is 3% next time, and they, and we give them that number, whatever the number is we give it to them, then they're going to have to, if they're going to come in and ask for more than 3, then they're going to have to come in and justify more than 3, because all we have is 3%. So it's, it's moving it away from putting all the pressure on us to say yes to the pressure on them to, to tell us why. So I, I, I think ultimately we'll be okay.
And if we give them additional, maybe it's targeted to a specific thing that they need to touch.
How much of the, how much of the 4.4% is the cost of the HCA acquisition? What would our growth be but for HCA?
So you got to think, when we. Oh, I was going to say, when we project stuff like sales tax, we don't even factor in HCA. So, because it's hard to project something out 18 months in advance like that, where there's parties involved. So I would say, what would you say, Jim?
I don't want to take a stab at it. I'd have, I'd have.
It's really just kind of.
I'd have to come back.
Well, the, the property tax piece is, that's pretty cut and dry.
That is cut and dry.
So, you know, because I guess one of my concerns, I, I like the general idea of saying, hey, here's the growth. Schools can probably think about that as, as a, as a number for budget planning. I think in lean years, you know, it'll be very hard to stick with that, you know? Because they're going to ask for more. This year, I mean, maybe they are asking for even more than that, but it's, it's, it's a pretty good revenue growth year. So this is not like the year this is going to be, I think, a really hard conversation. But, um, but it's also just, you know, I mean, I, part of the reason I asked about the HCA is that it's just, that's kind of a unique thing that's happened. So it's not, in some ways, really reflective of kind of the, the natural growth of the community. It's just this one-off big thing that's happening, you know, over the course of two budget cycles. So, um, I mean, I, I think the schools will ask us for more. You know, that's just what they're going to do. But I think our job is also, I mean, the one thing I, I don't want us to do if we're saying that you get the growth, is that that's automatic. I mean, I think they should have to justify all of it, you know? And, I mean, with some of the, you know, there's, there's tons of great stuff that happened in the schools, but I just, you know, some of the, some of the numbers we see are not good. And so I, I really want to understand, if you're asking for more money than you have now, I want to understand for all of that. Like what did, what is it going to be invested in? Especially to turn around some of the numbers that, that we should not be satisfied with. So, um, what else? Are there, are there any other issues that have not been talked about at all that people want to bring up?
So there's one other scenario that, you know, we're talking about Ferry Road. Said if, if Ferry Road, you can always, if, if it got bumped, which I don't, I'm hopeful that it's not, but if it, if it did, then you can just, you can just apply that money to a general fund later, right? When that money comes in, you can just.
That's correct. You post it as a revenue and.
Yeah.
But it's not, I mean, adhering to our policy is not contingent upon that transaction.
Right.
Incomplete.
Right, it's not.
Okay, right.
So, so the policy conversation, I need some guidance on. Are you comfortable going below the 15% contingent upon Ferry Road or, or not? Because if you look at it, we have, if we appropriate our budget in this scenario, we will have a $6 million gap in our budget. That can take our fund balance of 13%. But knowing that we would manage throughout the year to make sure that we don't end up the year at 15%, that will be our challenge. But I need to know from you guys, as far as staff and input, are you comfortable going below that 15% as we go into adopting a budget?
I am.
Going below it, but knowing it won't happen, or actually?
Knowing that we would work to make sure.
No, I'm confident in that they would work to, to control that throughout the year, out the year. And, and, you know, to the extent of things like, like sales tax. We, we've always underestimated sales tax. Sales, and right now, we're in a, we're in a superheated situation where sales tax is going to come in higher than where it's at. I mean, I don't, it happened last year, probably happened the year before. But it's a very hot number right now, and, and it's just going to come in a lot more. And it, it's going to come in, it's, it's a pretty big number.
I will tell you, across the state, we are at 6%, and they're actually lower. They're recommending that we don't budget as aggressive as we are budgeted. But because we have been seeing that growth, we've been pretty confident that we can lean pretty far forward and do that 6% that we're doing this year to get us there. But you're right, we're in a great economy and people are shopping. So right now, we're using that across the state. And across the state, they're saying around 4% to 5% is what they're seeing, and we're asking to go at 6%. So that's pretty aggressive, above everybody else in our state right now. So, um, but if you're comfortable going below 15, we won't have to think about what else we should cut from our budget now. I do think we need to have some time to start growing our core services and paying attention to those departments that we have neglected over several years. And that has been the case. I'm finding that out, I'm meeting with the department heads and departments and finding out there's a lot of need out there that we have not addressed over time. So for me, making sure that we can address that core and serve the citizens with the va, with the services that we have been mandated to provide. And some are quality-like services, we need to do that. If there's things I need to cut from the budget, give me that guidance now so that we can start working on those areas. If not, you're going to see a pretty hefty allocation of fund balance when we come back.
Okay, so that's what I'm still trying to understand. It's like, it's like, we just, you know, at the beginning of this meeting, found out that we went from not spending millions of dollars on fund balance to spending none of it. And we're going to have a big revenue growth year, and yet you're saying that we're going to spend $19 million of fund balance? I mean, it's just.
We're not saying we're going to spend.
Right, well, that's what the budget says. So, so that's what I'm just sort of trying to get a sense for, like, if it's actually going to be a completely different number, then why aren't we saying that big number? If we know it's going to be a third of that or a half. Why don't we just have a budget that shows what's more likely to happen? I mean, what's, isn't that what a budget's supposed to do?
Yeah, right there.
I guess that's where we're spending our buckets of money. That's where our money is going in those, in those big buckets. So I think those are, we're going to spend, what we would work to control, is the core services again. Making sure that we can control that spending. We are a little bit hesitant to put that 19 million in revenues. We, we're hesitant to go and say, we're going to have this much more to have loan, that may not come in. Yes, we have an awesome collection rate, but your base is still that base. We're hesitant to go and put more money to get sales tax or intergovernmental, because we haven't had the history to say it's going to come differently. What we have done is suppress our spending to make sure we don't spend any budget. Not because we've seen the revenue growth above in the other allocations. But as Jennifer's slide earlier, you saw, the increase in revenue was one time. They're from settlement dollars, they're from HCA's. It was one thing, it's, it's what got us to say, we have all this money because of one time revenue's coming in. What we have done in the past, though, is really worked on our core services and keeping that suppressed and not fixing stuff that needs to be fixed. So we will probably have some heaps of fund balance this year. So I can't sit and say, don't allocate the 19, because we need to address what needs to be addressed. We have to start making those hard decisions. So if there's anything on this list.
But we don't have to do it all in one year.
We're not.
We're not. Not with that, not with that budget, you're not. So we just got to be careful.
We've got a five-year plan of capital, land, and we're hoping to get a five-year plan for maintenance and we're here as well. But the things that we spend money on, as you see the big tickets there, those are things that we're locked into based on decisions.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, I don't want to sound, sound stupid, but the affordable housing increase, 2.325, that was, that's, uh, that's one time.
I was just looking at that, mountain housing, homeward bound, and habitat, humidity, three of them come up to that.
So those are like original, but so 925,000 is earmarked for the East Haven Development in Swaneroga. And then that left in 1.4 million placeholder surrounding decisions made by this board related to future affordable housing projects for 2020.
That's this year, right?
So you're, you're saying there's, there's, in addition to projects we've committed to through past votes, this budget assumes an increase of an additional $1.4 million for the coming year's budget cycle for some other to-be-determined project or project.
So for 2020, East Haven is 925,000. We don't have, we don't have any in 19, because we, we have agreed that that would be a 2020 payment, beginning payment.
Right.
So 925,000 is in 20 for East Haven. And then 1.4 million, which makes up to the 2.325 million for 2020. 1.4 million is, is an additional amount that is available currently for you all's. One point four million is, is an additional amount that is available currently for you all's.
So, so, so between the Homer Bound, the Habitat, various other ideas, we need to make a decision.
You gotta make them for.
And if we spend one point four million, would be right on if we spent more or less than it would. Move that number up or down.
Or if you wanna take that out this year, I know that housing committee's been needed and working on that. So we wanted to make sure if that work is going on, that you have some place on for that.
Yeah, that's good.
You can dial it back or you can do that. The same thing for the early education. Give me that commitment of three point six annually. So that's just not a one-time commissioner voucher, to your point. That's just an annual appropriation. That's gonna be annually occurring. So that's, that's there as well.
Okay, so that's place over. So, but fun, you know, fund balance is a tool that y'all, and that's, that's what y'all do. You know, that's what y'all do, right? I mean, y'all work within that to make sure that the needs are met and taxpayers are protected. I mean, that's, that's, it's not, it is a emergency fund. But it's not been used for an emergency, you know, hit the wall kind of thing. Yeah, which we prayed it, you know, that type of thing doesn't happen. It's, it's more used for this discussion, to handle that budget for a year so that the taxpayers are protected and the services are met.
Right. One of the things we committed to when Jasmine asked is to go back and look at what that, how we planned that philosophy and our policy of how we would bring forward fund balance going forward. We are continuing the trend that has happened before. But as next year's budget rolls around, we need to have our policy of how we would apply fund balance, what that looks like.
In terms of core services, are there any cost savings available in those areas that have been treated very well over the years that can be applied to other costs, to other core services? Does that make sense? Is that asking too much?
No, we can, we can go back and look at that. I don't remember. I, I know that we have used some of the vacancies and.
Yeah.
The one department that comes to mind is the head of the Human Services Department.
Yeah.
And there is a need there as well around the Medicaid and investigative services, and there's vacancies there. So what we will do internally is look to see what other departments that are funded, how can we move that and cover that need? Not that there's savings, but there's a resource allocation that we could.
Yes. Just to ensure that we are covering the core services and delivering what we're supposed to be delivering on.
You know, I, I still, I don't know where it's, it's not, I still have a, I still have a concern about long-term investments in, you know, parks and rec. You know, in, in taking a really hard look at the existing parks, what they should look like. You know, how they should be meeting the needs, you know, and how we should, you know, position them to where, you know, more people will be using them. Example is, is, you know, the changes made to Lake Julian have made a big difference. There's more families coming in and using the newer redesigned playgrounds and the new spaces there, so.
And I would say that's one of those departments that we need to pay attention to as well.
I've got just a couple of thoughts. One is, um, I mean, I definitely don't want us to actually go below fifteen percent, right? So I wanna be clear on that. Even if we do end up saying our budget forecast is used of fund balance, I would only be open to considering that if there's a very clear understanding that active management of the budget would result in it staying above fifteen percent.
Yeah.
At, at a minimum. I mean, my hope is that we, my hope is that we stay kind of more comfortably above it. That's one thought. The, I'll also just say, and I know this is not gonna move the needle dramatically in the context of this whole budget. I do kind of feel like, you know, I'm glad we're doing the fifteen dollar an hour policy and glad we're looking at other things to address, you know, kind of equity within the organization. I do feel like one place that we ought to consider in terms of savings is on the pay vacation leave policy where our current policy is definitely an outlier in the state. I think there's only one other county that we looked at as a peer that does that. And I think it's saving a million dollars if we did it. So to me, it's, I think we should be, you know, addressing equity and making, you know, investments where we need to. But that's one place where I just feel like it's not, it's a nice, it's a nice, it's a nice benefit. But I don't feel like it's as important as some of the other things we're trying to do personally. So I would just, I would, I would throw that out. The, um.
Chairman, even on that, I was gonna look at Sam. So not having the history and then trying to project what annual leave sales or leave sales may look like in 2020. I think we are around six hundred thousand.
It's not a monster number. Everybody's.
Not anymore because you have, you have.
Sixty hours. Yeah.
Go into the forty hours.
Yes, since you've cut it back, that has trimmed that number. But that's one part we can look at. But if we're not gonna go below fifteen percent, that means there's a six million dollar gap that we need to talk about. Is there any openness to look at some of the top items on the list? Do we need to put aside three point five? Well, that's the school's money. Early education and affordable housing groups, those larger ticket items. Is there any way that we can say not get there all in one year, but we take our time to get to that three point six million? But, um, early education, or can we look at the affordable housing funds that has additional one point four that's not allocated? And pull some of those things back? Those are our priorities as, as a county. So I wanna make sure that as your staff is going back and working, that you give us that guidance of what we have appetite for.
You know, on the, on the housing, on the housing committee, you know, the pro, the additional projects that we're looking at now that are bigger ticket items, um, are, some of them are, are multi-year projects. So I think there is probably some flexibility in terms of what year funds, you know, would need to be drawn from. So I think that's, um, anyway. So there, there could be some ways to try to manage when, you know, when expenses occur and things like that. And, uh, so we can, we can certainly kind of think about the number we have here and think about how to, how to work with it, I think, at the committee level.
That will be helpful because we need to bring forward a recommended budget in May. That doesn't go below fifteen percent. That's the, that's the rule of the board. If you're willing to go below that, let us know so we know what gap we need to work on.
Well, if you're, if you're, if you're able to manage through that, I mean, that's, that's the big question. If you're able to, if it's, you know, just under that and you're able to manage through that, then, you know, I'm a hundred percent comfortable with it. Cause I believe the revenue's gonna, I believe the revenue's gonna be there for the, for the year. The other thing too, on, on early education, you know, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on something that everybody agreed with, but everybody didn't agree with the number. And we, we do not know how we're gonna spend that money today.
Well, grants are coming. We did do an RFP call and there are, there's a whole lot more asked than three point six, so there's a need out there.
Six point something.
It's over six million of grants.
That just passed.
Yeah. Yeah.
But Rachel, it's, oh, but we have talked that we might not spend it all the first year, right?
Actually, we talked, we, we talked that we would spend it in the first year, but that we might look at doing two cycles of funding within the year. Um, is the last question I have.
Yeah, we had a meeting that you had met last week and we was talking about it.
Sorry, not spreading it over two fiscal years?
Uh, last week, when you wasn't here, we talked, there went with six million. We got three point six. And, and the question was asked, are we gonna spend it all the first year? And said, we hope not, but obviously we can. Correct?
Well, that's, well, when we pass the resolution, it, it, it gets the funding level to the three point six annually, starting in the first year. And I think at the, at the early stages of the committee, we talked about there might be a need to, based on what we see in the applications, and, um, if there might be the opportunity to, to, to reserve some of the funding for later in the fiscal year. Um, but I think the, I mean, I think the, the volume of applications that we saw speaks to the fact that the need, the needs are outdated, even with the three point six will survive. And we've talked about that for a long, long time. So I would, I mean, I, I, based on what I'm hearing today and wanna thank everyone who's asked in the presentations. I, you know, I, I would be comfortable with proceeding with the budget scenarios that you've outlined in terms of the, potentially the, um, that the nineteen million is fund balance with the aggressive man-to-management approach. And obviously, ultimately, if the Ferry Road sale would come through in time for this year's budget. So that's, that's where I should add this today, based on the presentation.
Um, I've got, I've got, hey, I've got, um, I've actually got a two o'clock call. So if y'all wanna give more feedback, please continue, but I'm gonna walk in a second. Just a couple of quick thoughts. One is, you know, George would brought forward some different changes in other benefit policies. You know, health was a big part of it. The commission generally decided not to make any changes then. I think we really wanted to get the permanent manager in place and kind of, you know, kind of take our time. Not make any kind of, you know, um, decisions on important issues like that without having a good, a good thoughtful process to do that. I do think that is something that we should look at. Um, I think we wanna have a great health benefit policy. But I, I was, you know, I was impressed that there might be some opportunities to do some things that could help us manage the costs going forward. And that's not just about one year, but like the next, you know, the next many years. So that's something else I would point to.
So, and real quick, we are having a consultant to look at our health benefit to help us write that contract the right way so we can have the savings long-term. So we are working on that as well.
Right. Um, and, and then the one last thing I wanna say, that's not on here, and it's not a huge ticket item compared to some of these other items, but, um, there are some, there are some transportation issues that I would be interested in talking about further in the budget process. So we don't have time, time to do it today, but, you know, like the, the transit master plan makes, you know, various recommendations. But there's, there's like, the highest priority recommendation of the plan is, which it, it contemplates the extension out, out in Lester, just a, you know, mile or two down the road, so it gets to Ingalls and the apartments and stuff like that. Um, there's a few things like that that I think we should take a look at, that I'd be interested in talking about more as we go through the budget process. So that's, that's one of the things I wanna mention.
Yeah, we need to make sure the city can tie back in this year as well.
Yeah. Okay. I've gotta, I've gotta take a call, but y'all keep talking and y'all adjourn when you're ready to.
So, since you're talking about the healthcare, um, Avril, you were not, since you weren't here before, and you're, you're talking consultants, the company that I was with before, I'll just give you, I'll give you this example because I think it's a pretty good deal. Clayton Homes has manufacturing facilities all over the country, and they for forty years had conventional break rooms, which were tables and, you know, and coke machines and whatever. And they would, people would bring their lunch and you had the refrigerator set. Well, they made a commitment, yeah, and I know they have at least thirty manufacturing facilities. They made a commitment to spend one million dollars per manufacturing facilities on a, uh, what they call a green cafe, which was a cafeteria. One million per facility. They did that because they wanted their people to not be drinking cokes and the, you know.
Nabs.
Nabs, you know, for some of, some people in here are going like, what the heck is a nab? But anyhow, if you wanna know, we'll tell you. It's a Lance cracker, but anyhow. So having that, having that, that's what it is. The brass shut up. So, but anyhow, if you're not gonna address your, um, your, your health costs until you address.
Yes.
And make incentives and provide investments in their health. And allow them to be able to, I mean, they built, they built gyms there. Well, you, so you don't have to build a gym at a manufacturing facility because you're gymming all day. Okay, so what did you do? You built a caf, you built a cafeteria so that you could address the food issue. And so, um, you know, there's, there are, there are families in, that work for the county that if you really wanna drop, if you really wanna cut it, then you invest, you invest in their health. Not in a token way.
And I think we do invest in health now with a lot of things we do. So how do we make that more visible and how do we make sure that becomes part of our routine and program that?
So I would challenge and say that, that the county does not. I would say if you will take and compare the county to, let's just forget the math right now, okay? If you would compare it to corp, other, other corporations that are well-run, that have high efficiency, that, that we want because that's returned to the taxpayers. Healthier people are more productive, costs drop, and in some cases, you can move more with less people. But I would challenge that it is, if we really do a assessment, we compare to other, to corporations, not to counties. But we're, we're not working, we're not, we don't have a program setting.
Okay. And, but I think the investment is there, the program needing to follow that. So that's one of the asks. We have our consultant to help us write that program so that that investment is clear. We know that there's incentives. If you do this, there's an incentive to do that. That piece is lacking enough on our program. So we're gonna work on that, and you'll see that at the end of this year. So when we have, open enrollment for January, we'll be rolling that out to the employees as well, so.
Well, I think we have to be very careful too about addressing the healthcare and the benefits piece before we address the pay inequities. Um, I think it's real tricky as you start talking about that and looking in terms of employee retention as well and hiring. We wanna make sure people are paid and that we're not just cutting people's benefits for the purpose of cutting a budget.
And I think people stay here because of benefits.
Tell the taxpayer that we gotta make sure that we did all this, and you just keep on paying the taxes. People get seven hundred dollars for making payments on their taxes, property taxes, and they don't have the money to do it and have to make payments. So I just wanna make sure that these people understand where we're at too, that we just keep on spending.
Was there anything else on the list that we need to be talking about as we go through? Cause our goal is to see you on the twenty-first of the balance budget. I heard Jasmine said Chiefs find going to level fifteen. You said fine bill. She said, um, Commissioner Brown, he said, no, you're not good against level fifteen. So I've got two and two. Anybody else?
Go below.
You can go below?
I can.
You can go below?
Yeah, cause we can manage it.
All right. So I've got a majority that says that we can look to go below. So we would work to bring back the balance budget that is not egregious, we go below. Where we don't have to cut the programs that we're doing and still try to balance that budget. So that's what I needed from you guys today, some guidance. So I wanna say thank you. If there's anything else you need for me to focus on, please let me know. If not, we will keep you on the loop, but keep working through that we can hammer a budget balance.
Good stuff. Y'all could, could.
It's online. It's online.
It's online.
Did you want a printed copy?
Print it, put it on the desk.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I guess you'll have to adjourn the meeting.
Is there anything that she wants different in the budget?
Anything you want different?
Nope.
Did not hear about Orchard Park, I can't learn, I know you don't have it out there. I'm hoping that's.
We're working, that's not a big one we have that.
Wanna get done sometime before.
We did have the answer to the free question. Do we want to show that? I do have a two o'clock upstairs.
I was gonna say, we'd be.
I'm.
We'll send that information.
We'll send it. Yeah, we need to be done.
Okay, Jasmine.
Okay, we have a question to do here.
Second.
Second?
Second.
We are here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.